I'm Kira Morgan. Thanks for joining me on this episode of Coffee with Kira, sponsored by The Human Being in Newport and Lincoln City. And today, we're at Newport City Hall, and we're going to get an update about some of the things going on here in the city of Newport. And joining me today is Mayor Jan Kaplan and City Councilor Cynthia Jacoby. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have the opportunity to talk with you.
So let's start off with some introductions for those who may not know. Jan, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? And you've just recently became mayor.
Right, right. I became mayor about... I became acting mayor a couple of months ago. I became mayor about a month ago, I believe it was, because that had to be approved, and there was a process. I had spent a year and a half on the city council. Prior to that, I was the president of the city council at the time that we needed to have a replacement. And it's been eye-opening for me, you know, that I understand why people don't really understand what we as council folks do, because I had no idea of some of the things that a mayor has to do. I know I'm busy every day now.
And your council position, are you still taking applications for that?
We've just, this past week, a week ago, were appointed Robert Emmett as the new city councillor, and Robert will get sworn in at our next council meeting. We had, we were very fortunate, we had five candidates.
We did. We had a lot of qualified, interesting, energetic folks apply. It was good to see. It was good interviews.
We had to, we were worried that we wouldn't have anybody, but we had, any one of the five who we interviewed would have been fine, would have been good.
It's always good when you have a tough choice ahead of you.
And, you know, we encouraged all of the people to apply to be on some of the city commissions and boards. It's really good experience, and maybe they'll apply for council again.
And Cynthia, tell us a little bit about you. You've been on the council for quite some time now.
Well, about just over six years. I applied to fill the end of a two-year term for someone who was ill. And then I decided to go ahead and run for election on my own right. And I was really gratified to be elected. It's really an honor to serve your fellow citizens. And it's been an education. It really has. It kind of helps you realize why things take so long. When you're spending taxpayers' money, you have to go through the process, or you get into trouble. So, anyway, it's been a real eye-opener.
That's appreciated.
I enjoy it. A lot, actually.
And there's been a lot going on with the city of Newport. You guys have a lot of things in the works. Jan, let's talk a little bit first about the city of Newport, the downtown revitalization. Let's talk a little bit about that, and what that's going to look like.
Okay, well, right now, we're in the process of appointing an advisory committee to work on the note on the process of what we envision for downtown. And that's a joint project between the city and ODOT, because it involves traffic patterns, and ultimately would require a great deal of funding from ODOT. So, the, we, there is a consultant being hired to work with the group.
Has been hired.
Or has been hired. And we're, you know, we're filling in this committee with as broad representation as we can. We did some interviews yesterday for some of the positions, because there are seats for general public, for people who live in the area itself, and for business folks, as well as some other seats, but some of those are, will be filled, you know, administratively. But, so, it, the process itself of designing this, coming up with a vision, is expected to last about 14 months. So there's nothing happening tomorrow. You can, if you park your car someplace, you don't have to move it immediately.
Right.
And let's define what the downtown area is when it comes to the city of Newport, because it's not the more common central part of the city. Is that right?
Yes.
I guess we're calling it city central, because we really don't have a downtown. It's kind of that core area, which has been called the Art Deco district. And, you know, I want people to remember that this is a long-range plan. This is not going to happen quickly. Like I said, things take a long time. This is actually looking out to 20 years. And it will be encompassing a traffic pattern along 101 and going into Highway 20. So there's a lot of factors to look at. And I was on the advisory team, which chose our consulting firm. And it's not just a consultant. This is a group of people who are going to help us. There's professional landscaper designers, urban planners. There's another person who specializes in business development, good government, community relations, and outreach. So this is really going to be a widespread effort. And I hope that sometime, I hope in my lifetime, we'll have like a downtown that we can point to and really feel proud of. Someplace where people can gather, someplace where they will want to take a walk, and live even. We plan on having multi-use buildings.
The notion, similar to what's in Nye Beach, that where you would have retail downstairs and condos or apartments above. So that, and the area is not strictly defined, but I think the area, the major focus would be kind of from City Hall down to where, around where the hospital is. You know, that seems to be the area, you know, that is most in focus. There are some properties there. We've, the city has, we've purchased some property, and deciding what to do with, how to develop that.
Yeah, things have actually been happening, but you can't see it yet.
That's usually, you just kind of wake up one day and go, oh wow, this is new.
It's often the experience of the city where we've perhaps been talking about something for two years, and doing everything we can to inform the public, and then something happens, and people says, nobody told me.
We're telling you.
So this is, it's being able to reach out and have people hear what's happening, from, at least from the horse's mouth, so.
Now, a lot of the buildings that are along the Highway 101 area, there's a couple of blocks at least where the buildings have more historical value. Is the goal to kind of try to keep that historical type look? Or will, how will that look and change moving forward?
I believe the plan is that the consultants, along with the city advisory group, will be working on some kind of a cohesive plan of design. And I think you're talking about the Art Deco buildings, the pig in the pancake, and the education building, and the arc. I would anticipate that that type of thing would be preserved.
Nice.
But there are some things that can't be preserved, that we'll just have to go.
Yeah, some of those buildings have probably lived past their usefulness, yes.
So we're not presupposing what the outcome of the process is going to be. So that's the reason for putting together this advisory group, is really to, you, to look at all of those ideas and come back to the council and the city and ODOT with, here's our idea.
And the reason this is actually being done, with urban renewal money, it's specifically for properties and areas of town which are underutilized and underdeveloped, and need help. So.
So I think it'll look, it sounds like it'll look really nice, and kind of bring kind of a facelift to that area and the city of Newport. And of course, the traffic patterns would change a little bit as well. Can you talk a little bit about that proposal?
Well, it hasn't been decided yet. There was a big fluff-up about, we don't want a couplet. But that hasn't been decided yet. It was just looked at. I think the problem is that the Highway 101 we have now is severely constrained by the buildings on each side. So it's just something we're going to have to look at very carefully from a lot of viewpoints.
Yeah, it does go from being really wide, and you know, you have enough space, and then it seems like you kind of get real squished. And if you're in a small vehicle, and you're right next to a big vehicle, it can be a little scary. Or if you're parking on the side street, and you're wanting to get out of your car, you never know. Somebody's going to come zooming along and take you and/or your door out. So it's tough.
So again, part of the work of the planning is to figure out what's the best configuration. And the two sort of major ways of doing that proposed are, one, the notion of having Ninth Street become a one-way, and 101 be a one-way. And the other is the notion of this couplet, and.
And can you explain the couplet aspect for those who don't know what that is?
Yeah.
Well, you know, if you've traveled around the state, if you've been to Coos Bay, Kilimook, McMenville, several other Oregon towns, I think Grants Pass was the first place I saw a couplet in use. It's just a way of having traffic move at a steady pace. Like if you go at 25 miles an hour, you can go all the way through without stopping. But if you want to stop and go to a business, or go to a personal service place, which is in that area, you'll be able to find a parking place, so you can stop and walk around. I believe there are going to be extensive plans for what they call streetscapes, where there'll be public seating, benches, planting trees, irrigation of those plants, so they stay alive. That, that kind of thing. And once you have your businesses and your streetscape developed, you know, it kind of tends to spread out more, too. The areas next to it will become improved. It, I think it will be nothing but, but good, whichever way it happens.
Now, what about South Beach? Is South Beach completed?
No.
There's still more work?
There's still work to be done. But that's at least the planning for that. And that's perhaps a good example of, you know, South Beach wasn't planned yesterday.
It's been seven years in the planning?
And much has been done, and there's, but it's being, it's been done with what the vision for the whole was going to be. And so as pieces get put in, it makes sense. But it's like suddenly, there's like a sidewalk, and how did that get there? Well, because the planning process started five or six years ago. And that's, that's how that kind of development occurs. So South Beach is not part of this project, but.
It's its own project that's continually being put together.
Right. And, so, but hopefully, they connect in terms of where, where this just, the city becomes more friendly, more livable, more tourist-friendly, more resident-friendly than, and more attractive.
And more attractive. I'm on a couple of public arts committees, and we are working on public arts design for South Beach, which will be forthcoming, and other parts of town also.
That'll be great.
We just had a dedication of our latest public sculpture in Don Davis Park last weekend, and feel pretty good about that.
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's pretty special.
That's one of our favorite places to go walking with our dog. So, let's talk a little bit. We kind of scratched the surface of the parking issue, but it's not just in the downtown or the Deco district area. It's also the bayfront, something you guys have been working on for quite some time. And how are things looking with Nye Beach when it comes to parking? How are things looking?
Well, Jan lives in Nye Beach. I'll let him cover that one.
At this point, the, again, we have a parking advisory committee that's working with community development, and has been putting the finishing touches on a parking plan for the bayfront. And the bayfront has been very particular. It's primarily commercial. It's, we know is, often is just crowded from end to end. And so the, the theory there is creating a system in which people don't overstay, that the traffic, that parking spaces turn over. As that project gets finished, the focus of the committee and will turn to, what do we do in Nye Beach? And Nye Beach, I think, is very different than the bayfront. It's, and it's largely a residential area. It's mixed-use. There's the downtown Nye Beach. Actually, I could point to an area that I would call downtown Nye Beach, where all the businesses are. And so it's going to be a challenge to come up with. And in most parts of Nye Beach, parking is not, at least in my view, I look out my window, and there's plenty of parking spaces, except when there's an event at the PAC. And then we get crowded for a few hours. So I, I think there's work to be done in terms of where do we, particularly around the turnaround and the arch, and that area where it gets very crowded. And whether, I know the discussions are involving, should we have permits of some kind? Would you do separately a residential, you know, permit for residents? Meters, I don't know that that would make sense or not.
I know meters were brought up at one point.
It's been considered, and everything's still on the table. And I think, from my point of view, I think there's some things we can do. People don't know that the PAC parking lot is a city parking lot. And you can see people looking for parking spaces and not knowing that, because we have no signage there right now that says, "Public parking."
And that gets tough, because if there is a performance, or there is something.
Yes.
Then the public's there, yeah.
The people want to be able to be able to go and park in that parking lot, or, and, so it's tough.
For years, we've been talking about the idea of getting a public trolley, small bus kind of system, that would go between Nye Beach and the bayfront, and city center, you know. And there could be several buses a day.
And such an easy loop.
Yes.
Especially during the high-traffic season. So I'm hoping that will happen. You know, we've had something really, really significant happen with the city. Finally, we have been able to hire a full-time professional grant writer. And I'm expecting some great things out of this person. So this is something that grants could be written for. There's tremendous opportunity here.
Well, the county has a bus service that does. Do they still have the city center loop, or?
Yes, yeah, but this would be different. It would be geared more for tourism and events.
Okay.
But also, and there is a shuttle that tends around during the seafood and wine, between the hotel area and. The notion is, in a town like ours, people won't use a shuttle unless I know if I miss one, I don't have to wait three hours.
Right.
Yeah.
And so what becomes important is, is the shuttle has to be up, because, and then people get used to not getting in their car. Or, you know, and I can get on and get off, and get on and get off. And if I go here, I'm not stuck there for another four hours until the next bus. So that's, that's the challenge, is having a continuous loop. And ideally, that serves a lot of purpose. It would save, you know, it's in terms of not, you know, not using energy, not using, you know, vehicles.
I'd love to take it.
I know, me too. I mean, I grew up, I grew up in a big city, and we didn't have a car when I was a kid, until I was about 10 years old, and didn't really need one, because we. But I grew up in the Bronx, and you got on the subway, you got on a bus. And it was a lot easier to get places, and you didn't have to pay to park.
So would you be working with the county on that? Like with the county bus service? Or would this be something that would be independent, that would be just for Newport?
I don't know.
It could be either. Probably more likely to work with the county, because they already have, they have.
They have the vehicles.
And the ability to do the maintenance. Our city vehicles are primarily, I think, serviced by the county right now, so. But again, nothing decided.
All being discussed. There's lots of opportunity.
But it would be so good for, you know, for, you know, just for folks who live here, as well as the tourists, but also, you can get someplace and connect to other buses as well. But you just have to know that, it's raining out, I, oh my God, I just missed the trolley. What do I do now? And I'm two miles from home. Well, there's another one coming in 10 minutes, 15 minutes.
Well, and that's a good point, is having sheltered stops.
Yes.
That's, I think, really important. I grew up in the Portland area, and, like, like you were mentioning, took the bus everywhere. And during the bad weather, everybody was just, you know, huddled inside the covered bus area, and.
So, so speaking of shelter.
Yes, shall we, yes. Shall we transition to talking about unhoused and shelter situations?
Some things happening at last. I like to think of it as the logjam has finally broken somewhat. There are two churches in Newport who are going to share every other week in housing as many people as they can. And I believe the Episcopal Church can take up to about 50, and St. Stephen's can do about 30. So as soon as the permanent shelter opens, which they need to do a little more work on the building, those two churches have really stepped up. But it will take some more community volunteers, too, to make the program run. And you've been, you've been working with that, too, Jan. We've both been to countless meetings, which have been fruitful.
Yes, we've got all of the cities.
Good do-something meetings, yeah.
All of the cities have representation with the county, with the Housing Authority, with Community Services Consortium at the table, and planning on bringing more, you know, on creating a five-year plan that would cover a whole range. But I think largely because it's been opportune, and people are at the same table, things are happening. And there is, there will be, as Cynthia was mentioning, there will be a winter. We've been worried about a winter shelter, cold-weather shelter in Newport for years. And what's happened is the county has stepped forward, and in partnering with the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority has purchased a building, the county will staff it. And what Cynthia was mentioning is, it's, I believe it, the program, because we want it from October 1 on, it will be able to handle on a rotating basis until the county's facility is in full operation, at which time the churches won't have to do that, because there'll be a, there'll be a 20, from October 1st to April 30th, I believe, a seven-day-a-week warming center and a cold-weather shelter.
And that's so good.
Oh, yeah. And it's going to be challenging.
Pressure off on trying to find hotels for folks, and.
You know, during COVID.
You never know when the weather is going to change in the wintertime. And I remember last year, we had bad weather during the seafood and wine, and those hotels were booked. There was no room at the inn.
Pretty brutal, yeah. You know, the county advisory group, I really like their mission statement. I have to paraphrase it a bit maybe, but it said, it's a five-year plan. And the goal is, in five years, to have homelessness be either an emergency situation or a choice.
Right.
And I am optimistic that that can happen for two reasons in particular. For the first time, we really have some money to put into the program. And this is from the state and the feds. And also, there's been consistent participation by all of the cities in our county. They've all been at the table. Everybody's really ready to do something. So I.
I think each of the cities is working on at least one project. One of the things I realized in the process is that there's a lot of needs around homelessness, and housing in general, because we have folks who are not homeless, but are living in substandard housing, can't afford. We have people who won't get, who are offered jobs in this area, in teaching, in medicine, who ultimately turn down, you know, say, I'm really excited to become, oh, but I can't find a place to live. I'm sorry, I can't take that job. So we're losing out on a lot of talent, and spending a lot of time recruiting, which is very costly to, and then have people turn a stint.
Well, the housing costs are through the roof.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you can't find anything under $400,000 anymore.
I don't, I don't think so.
That's, at least in the Newport area, that's, it's pretty much a rarity. And it makes it, it makes it tough for, like you mentioned, people that are just starting out, and getting started in their careers, and, you know, apartment living isn't for every family.
Right, or if you can find an apartment. So it is a lot of effort, and we've had a, you know, we're working on increasing our housing over, you know, and work has been done. We've all been, you know, not the city doesn't, we don't do housing, but we facilitate. And, so, and that, while that's not necessarily dealing with the population that people think of as the homeless, when people can't find places to live, they go where they can afford, and perhaps something that might have been appropriate for someone starting out becomes taken by somebody who just can't find something that fits their bill. So every, every housing unit we're able to get developed in the city is going to be helpful. And the other challenge, which has been, it's been really fun to work with the other cities, and everybody is very engaged at the table, is that we're, no, our cities are small. We're not going to have a full continuum of housing in Newport, or even, or in Lincoln City, even though we're the bigger cities. So having, having some cooperative arrangements where one city's, if there's a warming shelter in Newport, it relieves some burden in Walport. And yachts, and perhaps, and in those cases, they're working on other things that will be part of a whole housing continuum. So by, and just by knowing what each other are doing, you don't have three cities working on the same project, because now they talk to each other. And I think that will be helpful in terms of.
Yeah, there's finally some real coordination throughout the county. It's making a difference.
And that's, that's what it really was going to take. We've had small nonprofit organizations that have been trying to handle the burden of it without any money, with begging for funds, and trying to, you know, get somewhere, you know, treading water in the ocean. You know, you weren't going to get anywhere. But when you bring everybody together, and you say, okay, now we've got some funding, it's providing the services that are really needed for those who are on house.
I believe there are at least 40 organizations in the county working on the same problem, and they were just never coordinated. So it was a lot of.
And everybody was around after the same dime, and.
Yeah, exactly. So, so. I think there's hope, great hope, actually.
Part of the long-term plan is putting, is having a system to coordinate that. Is having what would be referred to as a navigation center, you know, one central place. Not where all the housing occurs, but which, if you're down in yachts, and you have somebody who needs someplace, that there's someplace to call that has connections, where they knows, here's a vacancy here, here's a vacancy there, here's a service here. So everybody doesn't have to know everything. And when you have systems where all these disparate people have to know everything, then nobody really knows anything, because it changes daily. And so I think a core to one of the long-term planning is this notion of this navigation center, which is not just housing units, because people need services.
Right.
You know, people need to be able to find jobs, need to be able to find the clothing to where to go to a job. Um, and all of those things fit together. And, and so by working together, I think, you know, and we've seen some immediate projects, a lot of money has come into the county. Some in this city, some in Lincoln City, Toledo. And, and being successful helps you be more successful.
Well, it's also kind of a fine balance because we are a tourist county. And there's, you know, the vacation rental dwellings. And so it kind of becomes a, a big issue of, we need places for people who come to our county to be able to stay and have a good time. But we also need houses that, the grocery clerks that, you know, wait on us at the grocery store, the gas station attendants, you know, the waitresses, you know, people that, that serve our community and are a core part of our community, they need to feel housing secure as well.
You know, in, in the, in the Housing Advisory Group, we discovered in, in talking amongst ourselves that one of the biggest tran- uh, problems was transportation between towns. Like if someone in Depot Bay gets a job in Walport and they have no car, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the county transportation system works well, but not frequent enough. As we were alluding to earlier, you know, you get up at six o'clock in the morning, you have to be at work at nine. You know, you've got, you know, all this extra time that you have to allow for, you know, catching the bus. And if you miss that bus, oh no.
It's the same issue as shuttle, yes.
Yeah.
You know, it, it was kind of interesting that our consulting group for this housing board, uh, they're, they're from Portland. And, you know, I don't think they really understood the transportation issues till we hammered it into them that, you know, we, we need to make this more, um, robust, which is one of Spencer's favorite words. We need a very robust county bus system to get people around. And I, I think that, that county would probably collect more in taxes than the bus would cost them if it, if it, if it could get developed.
Very possible. And maybe that simply to have the place that we all want to live in.
Yeah.
We have to, you know, that, that everything is not profitable, you know? People sometimes say, well, government needs to run like business, uh, in some, in some areas perhaps, but, but government is not driven by the profit motive.
Right.
And, and it's where do we put the dollars that we have? And, and we may need to subsidize. Again, if you're in Portland, uh, there's enough people that a, a bus is gonna be always utilized. In a, in, in Lincoln County, there's times that only two people need to be on the bus and maybe we need a small. How do we deal with that? But at the same time, if we don't have, uh, uh, you know, the ability to get places, then if I, if I get, if I find a place to live, but I can't get to work from there, then I can't pay my rent and we're right back to where we started.
It's a vicious circle.
Well, and I know that, um, even finding drivers, find, that's another issue that has to be looked at is, you know, do you, can you find enough drivers that you can afford to pay and that have their CDL and, you know, have all those required things that they need to.
It's complex.
Those buses. So there's a lot of, lot of moving pieces that have to be considered. It's not just a, well, fix this. Um, there's a lot of things that, um, that are in play when it comes to that. All right. Well, this has been a wonderful conversation. A lot of fun. Is there anything else that you guys want to add as we are wrapping up?
Well, there's one thing I would like to mention, uh, because it's come up in the last couple of days is that, um, someone, uh, posted something on Facebook or on, and possibly other social media that, um, that was simply wrong, that, uh, said that we were going to be replacing the Newport welcome signs that say the friendliest with signs that said crab capital. We've been trying to find out where that came from.
To the crabby's?
It was a real disconnect.
But somebody posted that that was gonna happen and, and then there was, we've been, we've, as city council, we've been getting all of these emails, you know, begging us or either begging us or yelling at us and saying, you can't do this or, and nothing's happened. And I, I agree. I, I don't think that's a good idea either, but nobody's asked us. And, uh, if there were to be a change in that, it, 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 city council would have to approve it. So we would know about it.
Right.
And it, it's possible, we do know that the, the Destination Newport Committee, which is funded through tourism dollars, has put forth a proposal to assess the condition of the signs because they're.
They've been up there for a while and they get warm weather and.
Requires some funding to, to make sure that they're okay and do any work on it, but nobody's said, okay, let's change it. And so I wanted, I just wanted to make sure people know that because I'm tired of getting these damn emails.
Yeah, they're, some of them are fierce. You know, I, I think it's just a, another sad situation in our society where misinformation spreads faster than the truth. And then you have to go back and try to correct it. I mean, this should be easy to correct. Please, folks, we're still the friendliest, not the crabbiest.
All right. Well, thank you both so much for joining me on this episode of Coffee with Kira. And just real quick, if someone wants to get involved with some of these committees or any of the things that we've talked about, what do they need to do?
Well, there, there's a city website where you look up committees. And under that, it says committee openings. And there's a whole list of places where people are truly needed.
Yeah, and the application is online. It takes a little patience to get through the city website. We're, it, one, one of the things that we can be very proud of is we have a tremendous amount of information on, on the city website. One of the challenges we have is that there's a tremendous amount of information on the county, on the city website. And, and you, you, you gotta figure out how to get places and it's, it's not always easy. But, uh, and there'll be work done on that, you know, in, in the future to try to, perhaps, you know, break it into something else. But, um, but, but yeah, as Cynthia said, there is, there are, there are boxes that are said committees. And if you click on committees, you'll, it'll, you'll get a list of all the committees and then you can get another click and you can find out what committees have vacancies and how to, and how to apply for them.
And when are the city council meetings? If folks want information about that, is that also on the city website?
And, and city council meetings are the first and third Monday of every month.
Unless there's a holiday on Monday.
If there's a holiday on Monday on that holiday, then the city council meets on Tuesday. I think it's in December and July that we only meet on the first, uh, Monday of the month. But that's pretty regular to put in your calendar. And the, the alternate Mondays are the planning commission meetings. So if people are interested in.
And folks can view these online. You can still see the videos. So if they're not able to make it that night, but you wanna know what's happened, you can go to the videos online.
Or you can watch us live every interesting minute. Sometimes we're there till nine-ish.
You know, they had, they had a, there was a football game on Sunday that somehow, in real time, had, had an animation of it that were like the characters from Toy Story playing football. But it was, it was synced with the football, so it was like they were actually playing. Somehow they did that.
Are you suggesting? But, but you guys are like the Toy Story characters.
Right, maybe we could have, we could have a city council meeting where, where, where it's animated. And then more people would watch the city council if we were cartoon characters.
Well, thank you again.
I like that, Jan. Sure, okay.
We'll put that in the suggestion box. Well, thank you again for joining me on this episode of Coffee with Kira. We are sponsored by the Human Bean in Newport at Sixth Street and Highway one oh one and in Lake City at the north end of the highway on the west side, next to TLC Credit Union. Uh, if you like what you see, be sure to like and subscribe and ring the bell for notifications. And I'm Kira Morgan, reporting from the city of Newport.